Okay, yeah. I have a script that I had never read before. Hope it's right. I hope it's right. Well, you could write anything in here and I'll say it, so I don't know. All right, good morning, everyone officially called to order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Palm Desert. Today's June 3rd, 2023. And I guess we can do the pledge. Did I say it wrong? June 13th? I don't know. All right, let's stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And so, yeah, here's the script. Let's do this before we do roll call. Prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting, it should be reflected in the minutes that at least a portion of this meeting is conducted pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 in that Director Aguilar is in Branson, Missouri and will be participating by speakerphone. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. Clerk Bermudez, will you please call the roll?
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada will be absent for today's meeting. Director Bianco?
Here.
Director Aguilar?
Here.
And Director Nelson?
Here.
Thank you.
Yay, okay, and so it sounds like we have good communication. I'd like to request that Director Aguilar respond to the following questions. Director Aguilar, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can.
Good. Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up until now?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Great. Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
I have posted and can report that there are no attendees present.
Okay, great. Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
It is.
Great. And you've already answered the last question. If there is anyone present, you said no. And if anyone does show up, just let us know so they can have an opportunity to participate in the public comment.
Will do.
Great, thank you. And we will make sure to take all votes for this meeting by roll call. Great. Do we have any additions, deletions, adjustments for today's agenda?
I don't believe so, sir. I know there was some discussion about one of the items on the agenda from finance. But I think it was just the pages somehow got mixed up. We posted the wrong version. Correct version will be coming down, but it's the item remains the same.
Ninety, correct.
Great. Is there anybody from the public wishing to comment at this time? Don't see anybody in the auditorium that wishes to comment at this time.
I do, Mr. President, and I'm not sure if he. I lost him. There he is in the audience. We just had a Mr. Chuck Tobin with BRTech. He wanted just, we'll make a note, if he's not speaking, just that he is available for any questions should there be on item 5D.
Okay. Thank you for that. Anybody else? Anyone online? Do we have anybody online?
No, we do not have any members of the public currently online.
Okay, thank you. So this brings us to the consent calendar, items 5A through G. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Mr. President, I'd like to pull item 5D.
D isn't David. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
I'd move the balance of the consent calendar.
I'll second that. And we'll do a roll call vote.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 4-0. And Elmer, it looks like you're gonna take 5D.
Yeah, I'll just kind of introduce it and why I requested the removal of the consent calendar is. So this is, Elmer, you can give the report, but basically it's an annexation of some property outside of Riverside County into Imperial County. And with the objective of moving groundwater from the basin out past Salt and Sea area into Imperial County to replace well water production. It's outside of our sphere of influence and service area. And I had some concerns about moving water to areas that had not previously been contemplated. And I understand, you know, through the report that, you know, there is water available for this, but, you know, on the long term, it's a little over 100 acre foot of water that, you know, we hadn't considered. And I'm also concerned about the annexation of this property and, you know, what would happen in the event of some kind of closure and our liability because it's now in our sphere of influence or taxing authority. And so there are a number of questions regarding that. So, Elmer, I'd appreciate your presentation on that and we'll see if that answers some of those questions.
Yeah, and thank you for framing the question as you did.
All right, all right. Good morning, good morning, President Powell, Board of Directors. The item before you is the first step in a possible annexation to the district. This is to authorize General Manager to execute a tax exchange agreement between the County of Imperial and the Coachella Valley Water District relating to the Salt and Sea solid waste site annexation into CBWD's sphere of influence. The landfill is located, confirmed is outside the CBWD boundary, hence why it has to go through LAFCO and is brought this item before you. Currently, the property is owned by the County of Imperial and owned and operated and maintained by BRTech. They've had a temporary construction meter to serve their needs, some of their construction needs and landfill needs, but their existing well has reported that it's insufficient for their purposes. And that's why they are petitioning to the board for a connection, a permanent connection to the district to supply water for their needs.
So they have a, they're currently being served by CBWD?
Just as a temporary basis, as needed basis, but they're seeking a long-term account with us.
Okay, so is that, is that, sorry, I know you, go ahead and ask the question.
How long have they been served temporarily through our connection?
I believe about three years. But we've been going through the process through LAFCO. They had started that process with LAFCO for about three years. And that's kind of where we're at right now.
I just want to clarify, they received a construction meter from us for significant periods of time, like 100 days at a time for a specific purpose. Like when they were constructing another cell or something and the volume from their well wasn't sufficient. Then they came to us and we said, we can give you 50 GPM for, I think it was 100 days. But it was, it was finite. And it was off a construction meter.
Okay, so do we have some pipeline that goes out there apparently, or is it temporary pipeline above ground or?
Um, it's, it's.
It's pulled off at a testing hydrant.
They truck it, yeah.
They truck it.
Yeah, so the permanent connection would involve an extension of a pipeline. It would involve a pressure reducing station. There's some significant, somewhat significant improvements they would have to make because we are very sensitive to their operations not impacting our existing customers.
Yeah. Okay. I'm sorry, John.
You know, I, you know. It's just the way the whole item is framed. You know, I think that the question of, so now the well is not in the eastern area benefit, right? It's outside.
The BRTech well is outside of.
I mean, this is way down there, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's outside the.
The boundary of our eastern Coachella Valley area benefit. So it's.
So no rack?
Well, yeah, of course, no rack. But it's also not tapping into the aquifer. So if we supply this other water to them, it wouldn't be benefiting the aquifer.
The other water that we would be supplying is coming off of our system in Thermal. The wells at Thermal because it comes down that new Highway 86 pipeline.
So, you know, that area had been challenged by water supply for a number of years. And I think we've completed now, or maybe we're in the process of completing that, the pipeline extension to provide more reliable service there.
Right, we did complete the Highway 86 pipeline so that this area is no longer being fed from the wells on county line. So it is more reliable. This general area in Salt City still has, you know, some weaknesses. I mean, a lot of weaknesses. There's, you know, still the old pipe that's been there since the 1960s. And so there's still concerns with serving them off of the existing system. But getting the supply to the reservoir that's in Salt City is much more reliable. But then it's from, you know, from that point to the site, they would need their own pipeline.
Since this is right along the county line, could they be served by the county, the old county line?
It's not county line.
Yeah, it's, it's, right, this is, when I said county line, I meant Avenue 86.
Oh, okay, this is our service area.
Our service area.
This is way at the bottom of our service area.
Got it.
I want to get a better understanding of what it takes to annex into our service areas and when the, when the result of that would be sort of the permanent export of water out of our existing service area. You know, the temporary thing actually kind of bothers me too, but that's temporary. This would be precedent setting. And I need to understand the boundaries of all the boundaries, not just down here on the south end of the west part of the sea.
Okay.
I mean, this, that's what this is, right? Is that really what this is?
It's an annexation.
Yeah, it's an annexation to bring this property within our sphere of influence. So LAFCO requires that there's, this is the first step, that we have this tax sharing agreement with Imperial County because it's, the property's owned by Imperial. It's within Imperial County. Basically, that's saying that neither one of us is benefiting, you know, from any taxes because it's publicly owned.
Because it's a public-owned property, there's no exchange of taxes.
Right.
So then there's a plan of service that goes along with this tax sharing agreement or is concurrent with the tax sharing agreement that we submit to LAFCO, which basically outlines that we have the water to provide to them. You know, but it does require that they do some improvements. And then LAFCO has to go through their public hearing process. So they have to publish this, they have to receive comments, and then they have to take it to their board for approval. That's my understanding of the process. If LAFCO approves it, then they get to annex into our boundary. So this is, this is kind of, this is the first step.
But even if they were to annex into our service area, that doesn't guarantee that they're gonna get service. What it says is then we could go through our regular process to determine whether or not there are facilities and there is water to serve them. And I realize this is the first step in that process, but this is not a commitment of CBWD to remove the annex or will serve or serve the water.
Right, there'll be a special agreement that we have with all of our customers, developers that want water service from us. So, you know, that will outline, you know, everything that they have to do to get service.
So obviously, in that area, there's, there's no water.
There's.
They have a well.
There's, there's water, but it's not of good quality for drinking purposes. I mean, it would have to be treated, obviously. It's like, you know, high in TDS and.
Why do they need drinking water there?
They don't, they don't, no, they're using it for construction water and.
So you would think it would be okay.
Yeah, it seems like the perfect saline dirty water, put it on the garbage and you're done.
Done, yeah.
I think it has to do with the, they can only get so much out of their existing well and the cost to re-drill the well. More than they want to spend right now if they can.
It's gonna probably cost them more for us to bring them water than drilling our own well. It makes sense.
That's what I was thinking as well.
You got a lot more.
I mean, we do have our representative from BRTech, so we could ask them for those details. I don't want to say something incorrect.
Provide some more information, it'd be a good time. Thank you.
Yeah, just push the button, make sure the blue light's on.
Good morning, I'm Chuck Tobin from BRTech. The site, as it's been pointed out, the site is owned by Imperial County. It was one of their longstanding waste sites. They put out a request maybe 13 years ago, something on that order. BRTech was the winning bidder on the site. So the intent of the county was to develop it as basically a regional site and, which is what the EIR was all about. This option went under the EIR, the original EIR, there were three water options. One was to drill the well, drill an outside well. Second was to connect to CBWD. And then the third was to try to do something with the Salt and Community Services District on recycled water. As you know, that agency, we have, the site's been in operation for about 10 years now. So, and we have worked on the recycled water project for all of those 10 years. But that agency has its unique set of issues, which we're not quite sure what the future is of that agency.
Is that agency a Imperial County special?
It is. It serves those west shore communities, basically. It has kind of an odd configuration. Some of the services that it used to offer like fire have been transferred over to the county. And so what they're left with now is they do the hauling contract for trash. They have the wastewater, but it's basically ponds is what they have. They also have parks in the sense that they're small parks. They may disincorporate and those services may again transfer over to the county. On the, again, the question of what's happened to date for the last 10 years. We have, the well has been sufficient in most cases for daily operations. We also are looking at a second well, basically for daily operations. The water in question is used, as has been pointed out, for construction purposes, for building liners is what it boils down to. As you know, for a construction project, you oftentimes need a bigger amount of water in order to go through with that project. Your district has, we have been very thankful that your district has provided temporary services, actually three times over the last 10 years for construction purposes. In talking to district staff, it was the conclusion that perhaps going, continuing on this kind of temporary basis puts you in an odd situation as a district because you're in essence providing a service to something that's outside of your formal service boundary. So that's where the discussion about the annexation came up. As to, it may not be in all respects the most perfect solution, but it was a solution that allowed both parties to continue this dialogue and also to work out whatever the appropriate agreements are in order to go forward on this. So this is, as has been pointed out, we got into an odd situation because the property is, of course, in Imperial County. It's right at the boundary of your service area. LAFCO, when you look at the annexation issue, there is, there is an Imperial LAFCO, but there's a Riverside LAFCO because the majority of your service area is in Riverside County. We ended up with Riverside LAFCO as being the processing agency on this annexation request. This morning on the Imperial County Board Agenda, they have exactly the same document that you have in front of you right now because this is a requirement under state law to do this quote "tax sharing agreement." It comes into play mostly where you have an annexation issue inside of a county. If we were just, if everything here was inside Riverside County, then, then of course, and there was a new even public entity created, then the agencies drawing on the property tax would have to sit down and negotiate something. In this case, there is zero tax sharing. This is the non-tax sharing tax sharing agreement. So, but it's required by state law is what this step is. So as is the agenda item states, what LAFCO is looking for, Riverside County LAFCO, to continue on their process, they need from both CBWD and Imperial County, this exact same tax sharing agreement. And as I said, it's on their board meeting this morning. And then secondly, the plan of service. On the plan of service, what your staff did is that it requested that we pay for the hiring of a consultant to look at what's necessary in the way of line upgrades in order to provide the level of service that was stipulated in the agreement. That's been done. There is a set of improvements that will be required. And then as Ms. Oliphant indicates, there, once the annexation portion is finished, then the actual service step is a future step where we'll sit down and we'll work out a schedule for the improvements. We'll talk about what the actual needs are. What I'm stating here is that the actual amount of water that's required here is really for construction purposes. So even though what's stated here puts it at this level, in reality, we're down at a much lower level. And it's only for usually a few months' time every three years or so. So that's the amount of actual drawdown that we're looking at. We very much would like to both be annexed and also to work with your district. This area, as you know, Salt City is in dire need of upgrades in the infrastructure, whether it's the water system or the wastewater system. And so we're, we look at this project as being something that can help that and in essence can help you to have a better quality service in that area. So any other questions?
In the plan of service, contemplating the plan of service, would that cover things, you said liners, is that the trash cell liners? Or is it the two reservoir liners that you might need for the water storage on site?
It's a little bit above. It's better if, obviously, as you know, if a water, if a pond is lined so that we get, we don't want to have the water drain out. But it is, in this respect, it's for the liners for the trash side of the operation. And as I indicated, we have, we have built three liners, an initial liner 10 years ago and then two liners since then. And that, and that's what happens in these projects. This is a half section and ultimately the entire half section will be lined. So we have many, many more liners to go. And as I indicated, as we, your district was kind enough to give us again temporary service for these liner projects in the past. But it puts them in something of a, because we are technically outside. So they're trying to help a sister Imperial County with this project. And so again, after discussing this, the feeling on everyone's part that it was, it would be better for all parties if we just formally annex into your district, that then gives you correct legal control of this situation and where we can then proceed to the next step with respect to an actual service agreement.
So question, what then kind of responsibilities by annexing this into our taxing authority, what responsibilities then might that give CBWD?
In terms of?
Future liabilities?
Well, it's, the property's.
Water service? I mean, are we then required to give water service? Or is that, would that be a negotiated agreement down the line?
Yeah, that's a negotiated, that's a negotiated agreement.
Right, so the annexation is just the first step to accept their application, formal land development application for formal service.
And the property still remains owned by Imperial County, so there's really no liability there.
Okay.
We're not taking on any of the ownership of the property. It's just coming into our boundary so that we can legally serve them. Either construction water.
That's what it's gonna be. It's gonna be construction water forever. I mean, there's never gonna be a, there's never gonna be a pipeline. I mean, BRTech's never gonna pay to have water sent all the way over there. It's just gonna cost too much money.
I'm no community planner, so I'll state that right off the bat. But it seems to me that if, I mean, that it's construction water, that if Imperial County assisted the Community Services District to put together a wastewater treatment plant, that then could use tertiary water, secondary water as construction water. It, that seems to be a better system than putting out another half mile eight inch pipe and a six inch meter and for this. And there's, it seems like there's obviously some groundwater that could be used in conjunction with the wastewater treatment plant, which, you know, the wastewater treatment plant, if it's over in Salt City and it's unlined or it's, you know, just, you know, seeping down to the Salt and Sea, that's no good either. So I'm kind of inclined, I mean, that was a great report, by the way, and I appreciate the background on the EIR. It seems like there were three supplies that were contemplated, CBWD being one, but the other wastewater treatment plant, localized groundwater, which would be probably great quality for construction water. I kind of lean that way in the.
You know, yeah, I mean, I agree. I think you're, I want to help you. I just don't, I don't like the potential for precedent setting, you know, on our boundaries so that, you know, we do this once and now it's open season on expanding our boundaries for anybody that wants water. I don't want to do that. And we're not in a situation where we have excess water. So, you know, if we needed to get rid of water, that would be one thing, and I don't think we're there. So I would need more info, not so much from you, but from the district on, you know, what sort of precedent would this set and is there some way to mitigate the risk of that if we were to serve this property? And I agree, I mean, it sounds like that Community Services District is not functioning very well, which would be the best solution would be to manage this locally rather than bringing water in from Thermal, which is what we would. rather than bringing water in from thermal, which is what we would otherwise do. I would, I mean, if, if I were going to state my own preference, I'd like to table this and get more information on the, on the whole question of precedent setting annexations.
And, and then we could also look, contact LAFCO to see what, what, what happens if there's a rejection of a tax sharing agreement? Because that's really all that's before you today.
Right, yeah.
I don't know if that means.
And I don't want to, I don't want to vote no on this right now because I don't have enough information on, on the other implications of it.
I mean, there might be something where LAFCO proceeds or I have no idea. That's.
Yeah, no, that's fair, that's fair.
We could come back, I mean, if, if, if the questions are answered to some satisfaction, I mean, we could always come back and approve the tax sharing agreement.
Yeah, I don't want to, I, I get a sense of where the board's going. I just think there's one more piece of information that ought to be included in the consideration. LAFCO has taken the position that they believe this issue has been open for far too long, I think three years. And their executive director has basically told us that if we can't get CBWD's approval by the 23rd or the 25th of this month, then they will kill the project en request. And so our next board meeting is the 27th. We've told them that. Elmer did at the last minute push to get this on this agenda to satisfy LAFCO's deadline.
Yeah, but I'm going to need more than 10 days, so.
Okay. And I don't know then what LAFCO will actually do, whether they will in fact kill this project or they'll give us time to answer the board's questions.
It's Imperial, whatever. No, that's Riverside.
So in terms of precedent. In terms of precedent setting, do you want us just to look at other annexations that we may have done in the?
Well, you know, so it's kind of, you know, you have the, I think where it's really, the rub is where this is, the well on this project is not in the basin. So we do annexations, but you know, if it's Indio and Coachella and, you know, that kind of thing, you're just moving the lines, but you're still in the basin. So you're not really adding, you're not exporting water outside the basin. This is, this is different because of the exportation. I'm, I'm just not getting why they just don't put a couple of wells in, a couple, one big well or a couple of two, two big wells and pump their own water for free. It doesn't make sense to me on what's going on. That's, that's why we're asking all these questions.
Yeah, that is the case. And perhaps what we can do is we can, the, the landfill engineer is this morning down at the Imperial Board Meeting. We kind of split the duty is what it boiled down to. So we're happy. If you want to continue, that's, that's okay with us. We think you need to be satisfied. The LAFCO issue is, arose on this deadline issue simply because, as was indicated, the application went in three years ago. It took a while because of this odd situation of where the projects in Imperial and your district is primarily Riverside. There was a lot of discussion over that. Even the state requirement on what's a tax sharing agreement. Imperial scratched their head over that one for a long time. So, you know, as you know, I mean, the, the wheels, the government grind slowly. LAFCO, I think, is more interested in the fact that it's actually reached the discussion stage. So I don't think there'd be a problem if you indicate that you need, you know, X amount of time because that's really all they were looking for. I would anticipate that the Imperial County Board would approve that tax sharing agreement in front of you. So at least, you know, again, for your discussion purposes, you can go forward based on that knowledge. But their meeting is 10 o'clock this morning. So on the question of the other wells, we have looked at that for 10 years. The reality is, is that there is not a lot of groundwater and there is simply, I mean, if there were for construction purposes, we would have gone that direction a long time ago. But in that, when you have a construction project, you require, you know, an amount of water in a short period of time, which a well just is not sufficient. So we have one, we're looking at a second. But our daily operations also have been increasing. And so, so we're trying to basically balance this with using the wells for the daily and then hopefully your connection to your district on the construction side. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
So, so would the board like to table this to the next meeting or just continue it? And staff can bring it back as appropriate or not appropriate? When it's ready to be brought back?
Yeah, I think next meeting might be too quick.
So just, just have it continue?
Yeah, continue. If that's all right. I haven't heard from Director Aguilar on this.
Thank you, John. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I'm fine with tabling the item. I'm just interested in what, what form the additional information that we're looking for would take when it comes back to us.
Right, so I think I'd like to know what sort of exportation related annexations we've done in the past? And if we were to do this one, what, what sort of precedent would it set for pretty much our entire boundary of the district? Which is a, which is a lot, really a lot of, of linear miles.
Okay, thank you.
What, what would be helpful information from the Special Salt and Sea Services District and/or Vertec in terms of water supply? I just have a Google map open on my phone here and I'm looking to see that, that actually the wastewater district has more open pond space than does Vertec, the two ponds on the property. So it seems to me that, you know, just from a volumetric, you know, perusal of something that, you know, just taking it at, at face value is that there's water supply available if treated.
Their situation, and I know, is, yes, they built in Salt City, they had what are called the old ponds and then they have the new ponds. The new ponds sit in Thule Wash, if you're familiar. They're both fairly close to the seashore. They, for the new pond, they experienced an issue, which is, is that they had surfacing outside the ponds. So the water board basically has restricted them. So they're running at maximum right now in terms of the, their, what they can take there. What we worked with them on, because it was, the, the recycled water was one of the three options in our original EIR. We worked with them to try to identify funding sources. And the state of California, of course, has a significant grant funding available for especially low income areas to do recycle water projects. We applied, we basically wrote for them an initial application to see if this project would qualify. And the state said, yes, of course it does. The issue with Salt and Community Services is that, is, nobody knows if they're going to be in business tomorrow or the next day. If you'd like to take over their wastewater operations.
That's outside our service area.
Yeah, so listen, yeah, so that's, you know, I heard where you were going and, and, you know, Imperial County has an obligation here. And we've gone down to, you know, Bombay Beach, just like, you know, kind of Bombay Beach. I mean, we spent, I think, $5 million down there several years ago. And, and, you know, we're never going to recoup that money in wastewater service, you know, payments. And so it just, it is what it is. And I think Imperial County, you know, has some things to look at there. And so.
And just, I, I don't want to speak, but should they be de-annexed? I think Imperial, at least on an interim basis, is willing to absorb those services. They have done so in other instances that are fairly comparable. But whether, again, that's the best long-term solution for that area. What you're left with is, just as you are on the water side down there, you're left with a wastewater system that's in essence old. You know, it was built quite a while ago. It was, and it is just, just like your experience on the water side. I mean, you've got, you know, repair crews down there ad nauseam to just try to keep the thing going. We were hoping to, that they would be politically stable enough where we could do a project with them. Because we have other interests in recycled water. Because we feel, well, we have other needs that recycled water would, but, but, but we've worked with them now for 10 years and they just, it's the churn. And now they are probably going to go out of business, you know? So we just don't know.
Yeah, fair enough. Thank you very much. Okay, so I think we have clear direction, right? We don't need any formal action?
No. So unless there's any objection, this matter will be continued. The staff can come back at appropriate time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Carrie and Elmer. Onto the easy stuff, the budget. So 7A is ordinance for adoption, approval of ordinance 1399.16, adopting fiscal year 2023-24 domestic water rates. Which is going to be a big part of our budget, I should say. It's leading up to the budget. All right, Rick, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell and members of the board. So the, the presentation and the discussion is really covering all three items together. It's just more efficient that way since they're all related. And the three items are 7A, 7B, and 8A. And so the, this, this set of items is really the culmination of what has been months-long discussion, originally starting in January with staff on a detailed level and obviously with the board and public session from March. And so over that timeframe, we've covered a, a number of different topics, pretty much comprehensively, everything financially, going into what's being requested today. Because we went in detail at those meetings and all those materials are available, won't be going into detail today. But we'll cover a, a number of highlights, I think, that are pertinent to the discussion. The, the real highlights going backwards, just as, as, for the sake of reminders.
Hey, Rick, I'm sorry, can you, can I pause you for a minute? Looks like the Zoom audio, we just lost it and Director Aguilar can't hear us. So I'm having staff reconnect us. So if we can just pause for about 30 seconds?
I know, I haven't figured it out.
And we'll just, Director Aguilar, can you hear us? I believe we're back on.
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect. And then, oh great, we have Director Bianco back? Okay, we're good, thank you.
Thank you. So was just beginning the, the recap of the, the major items that we've been reviewing the last few months. In, in March, it was really three major sets of, of items. The first was a debt overview, which was really about where, where we've been, which was essentially zero external debt on, on things like bonds and what have you. And because of the increase in CIP activity, going up to about 368 million in authorized debt with an anticipation of needing another 99 in this five-year period to fund the five-year CIP. And with that, we also talked that we still have an outstanding CalPERS unfunded amount of about 140 million, but there was a plan to go ahead and keep addressing that in about a 10-year period. And so from debt, we looked at what the, the then rate, anticipated rates were going to need to be. The, the big key takeaway there was our domestic service and sanitation service needed the most help, which is why they're the focus today. There was some discussion of canal mostly needing some attention in terms of rate pressures, but that was towards the end of the period. And that largely dealt with QSA costs going up for our agreement for additional QSA water and the rates that we pay there. And then, of course, which is normally the, the big area in March, we covered the five-year CIP, which was a comprehensive discussion on the prioritized projects necessary to, to keep providing service and, and enhancing service to some degree. And so in that, the key takeaway was to fund that five-year CIP, we needed the 99 million in additional debt. Otherwise, we'll have to, to go back to the whiteboard, so to speak. And so that, that was March. In April, the, the focus was on a comprehensive overview of the operating budget. So that was everything from labor to outside services to our other types of revenues like property taxes and, and the whole gamut of things. And so we covered that in detail. And then last month was really two major things. One was recognizing that we should relook at the reserves policy. The, the reserves policy is an integral component of rate setting. And so out of that discussion, really the focus was, instead of doing a comprehensive update, just focusing on the state water project reserve, which you'll see an item later on in the agenda for, for the proposed updated policy. The, and then the last item was, because we were waiting on updated information, going specifically over the updated state water project fund budget. And that really noted that we have a bit of a miraculous year with 100% allocation. And so what that did to the numbers, and also incorporating what are really new, two categories of costs that we haven't seen, at least recently, in that fund. One was storage from Met to be able to, to hold that water for future delivery. And then the delivery costs of the Rio Bravo water, since that water's transported through the state water system and we get invoiced by DWR. It was determined to be an appropriate place to be funded. So today, as I mentioned, there's, there's really three sets of actions being requested. Two ordinances, and that's 7A and 7B. Each ordinance replaces the rates. So if, if acted upon today, what those do is what we've been discussing, the same, the same discussion. So domestic rates would be the five and a half percent increase on July 1st. And the second ordinance would be our sanitation rates, which is the average of eight and a half percent increase effective July 1st. And the third action, which assumes the first two, is the adopted budget. And so there's really three resolutions there that take care of a number of budget-related items. And I'll get into more detail on those when we get towards, towards the end. So the, the rates being requested. And so I'll, I'll cover both what they are and, and why it's necessary. The good news here is we've done a number of actions to try and reduce these to as low as possible. And in some of our rates, it's 0%. And so all of the RAC rates are proposed not to increase for the next year. And the canal rate, as we discussed, there's no proposed increase. The only two that we are focusing on are the domestic and the sanitation rates. Again, domestic at five and a half percent, which turns, translates for an average domestic customer at a little under $2 a month. And for sanitation, the eight and a half percent represents a little over $2 a month. Yeah, resulting in, in domestic bills of about $36 a month and sanitation bills of about $28 or $29 a month. As just a, a quick recap on what does the, the overall budget look like? Again, we went into detail in the prior sessions. But an operating, total operating expense budget, all funds of 331 million, which at a gross value is about eight and a half percent higher than the last budget. There are a number of things there which, which kind of skew that number. One, obviously, a huge part of our budget is the state water project. That's funded by a separate tax, not the rates. And so when you exclude that, and especially it's a big driver of the increase, and the fact that we had a very large conservation project program this year funded by drop penalties, you exclude those and we're really talking about a five and a half percent budget increase, which is right in line with what is driving the budget increase, which is inflation, which has been in that, that five and a half percent range. which has been in that, that 5.5% range. Just to highlight, a lot of the major actions contemplated in this budget through the various different departments and actions the, the department has done and from board direction to try and bring down those rates. The, the first really is that this budget does include a considerable amount of reserve use, intentional reserve use, in total of a little over $21 million. That really represents on the domestic sanitation side, the recognition that we're coming into balance longer term between our operating expenses, our ongoing operating expenses, and then the, the new rates help, help balance that out. But we're not there yet, which is why we've talked about a five-year plan. So in the meantime, there's still planned reserve use to get there. There's also planned reserve use on the West Rack that was really dealing largely with the Rio Bravo water, which we're not anticipating to budget as a regular part of the budget. So when it does come up, the idea is we'd use reserves to fund it as long as they're available. Because the state water project fund is contemplating a historic amount of expenses, dealing with the, the, the good news of the 100% allocation. There's anticipated to be some deficit spending there. And then stormwater is really all about the CIP projects and Pago funding, getting through those major projects. As you all know, the, the, the district's been incredibly successful in getting grants. And so this continues in the estimates for grants that we're working on and have been approved on. So almost $19 million of additional revenue on grants. And then lastly, a, a number of things which kind of just reflect in the overall numbers that the departments have done to try and manage budgets. The salary benefits, despite pretty historic inflation over the last few years, at less than a 3% overall increase. And then the supplies and services budget, which is our catch-all for everything we buy and all, all the services that we need, including things like insurance, which we'll hear later, and, and everything else, at a 2.5% increase. And some additional actions this year to try and, that are incorporated in that number, like beginning to tap into our OPEB trust because of its funding, which produced another million and a half savings. So just the last recap on the overall numbers. We're talking about a total district-wide appropriation, which is what you'll see in the resolutions, of a little over 485 million, that's the total budget. We already talked about the operating expenses on debt service. A total debt service of about a little under 13 million for this next year. That gradually increases year over year, which was incorporated in the previous, previous presentations. And then the CIP budget, a healthy CIP budget of 141 million, which looks lower than previous years, but I think that's partially skewed by just the very large nature of recent projects that we've been working on and the progress from it being made there. So getting to the end of it. And so I have a few slides each over each major action. And so it's, it's here where we would request the board consider the action. The first one is under 7A for the ordinance. It both rescinds the prior ordinance and, and if approved, what, approve the, the one being proposed, which has the domestic rate increase. And then the next action would be sanitation and the other one would be the budget actions to reflect those. And so open it up to questions or, or any comments.
Any board questions? And just so that folks know, we have covered this a few times already. So you've already answered my questions and we've made what adjustments I thought were appropriate. So I appreciate that. Director Aguilar, any questions or comments?
John, I just have one question and it may be covered in the next item. But where does the, the conservation money show from the Bureau?
So the Conservation Fund is in the Supplies and Services number. And so next year, we go back down to what's a more historical average for the, the turf replacement and other conservation programs. I think it's.
I think he's looking, he's asking about the suspension of replenishment water. 12 million will get 60 days after the agreement. We haven't got the agreement approved yet, which is also on this agenda. But that 14 million total for the suspension of replenishment at Levy, I think he's asking where is that going to show? And I think tentatively, it's in Canal.
Yes, yes. And so you'll see actually part of that anticipated in the current year budget because the, the replenishment begins this fiscal year. It's reflected in next year's under intergovernmental revenue, I believe. It's all in the Canal Fund. So you see a heightened level of revenues, intergovernmental revenues over the next few years in the projections. And that will build up the reserve temporarily until, until we get direction on what to spend those funds on.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. So I would say, I don't take this lightly. I've been, I think, every year since I've been here for the last seven, we've been proposal to increase the domestic. And I think I voted for it maybe once. I do think, though, that because of what's happened with inflation, that, and, and us not having a rate increase and holding the line, I think during COVID, that is warranted. So I'm going to vote yes. Appreciate that. It doesn't mean that next year, when you come, it will, I will be fighting you hard for a rate increase. That's why it's in this year's budget.
Weren't we talking about precedents earlier today?
Yeah, no, this is not precedent-setting. And I think staff understands that. Good. So why don't we take up this approval of ordinance 1399.16 for the domestic water rate? Is there a motion to approve that?
Yeah, I'll move. Second?
I just wanted to see if you would do it. Okay, so we have a mo, we have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed 4-0. Onto the sanitation, which is item 7B.
Yes, and so this is the sister ordinance for the other one, which would rescind the current rates and approve the 8.5% increase that we've been discussing for the sanitation rate.
Right, and this maxes out what we approved on the 218?
Yes.
Notice that was already sent out? Okay. Or what, I should say, what we, what was included in the 218 notice that was already sent out?
Yes, these rates are all covered by previous 218 notices.
Right. Any discussion before we take action on this one? Okay, go ahead.
No, no, I just said no, I'll move the item.
The public should know that, you know, a lot of this is being driven by us trying to recycle every last drop of water. And so to do that, I think the investment that we make today is going to be well worth it for the future.
Very well said, is that a motion?
We, we have a motion, I'm looking for a second. There we go, okay, there's a motion and a second, roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed 4-0. So as mentioned earlier, we have the related item of adoption, it's 8A now, action items. Adoption of the fiscal year 2024 operating and capital improvement budget.
Yes, and so this, this item is really budget-related and it has some budget-related actions. There's three separate resolutions incorporated. My, my recommendation is a single motion over all three unless Mr. Frey says otherwise.
No, that's fine.
And so the first resolution is essentially adopting the budget, but it incorporates a couple of additional specific actions. So it, it sets the overall appropriation at the amount we discussed of 485 million. The budget also includes the 570 full-time equivalent staff. And so you're setting the upper limit of total staffing. That, that incorporates the one additional FTE increase that we discussed. We also discussed in a prior meeting, setting a specific repayment timeline for the Mid Valley Pipeline loan. This is from West Rack to domestic at 15 years, so this establishes that timeline. It can be amended in the future if, if other reasons determine that that's in the best interest. And then lastly, because we discussed it and, and it's a, a different allocation of costs, the same action with the, the transportation component through the state water system for the Rosedale Rio Bravo water being charged at state water project fund. The water itself is still charged to West Rack. So that, the first resolution does all of those things. The second resolution is new, but we should be anticipating this every year that we do a budget, which is it authorizes us to reimburse ourselves for the same projects we're talking about on the 99 million. So when we get to the bond issuance, we can look backwards and replenish our reserves for what we've already spent. We have to do that in advance, so that's, that's why we're doing it now.
Okay.
And then lastly, which you see every year, which is the resolution establishing the GAN limit, which recognizes we're under the legal limit with what we're anticipating for general property taxes. And so that's the recommended motion to approve all three resolutions.
And, and Rick, if I could just ask the clerk to maybe clarify why we had a second hand out or a first hand out here?
Yes, so there was, so it was interesting on the online system, the agenda, the HTML version, the BAI that was on there was actually the item for 7A. But on the full PDF packet, the BAI was correct. We're not sure why that happened. So just to ensure that the board members had the correct staff report in front of them, we printed out a copy of it.
And we'll correct the online version.
And we have already corrected, yes.
Cool, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. All right. You know, just, you know, just so you know, so just recently, we've gone over the 100 million mark on the CIP. So that, that's just happened over the last three years. And so, you know, this 180 was, that we just went through, was kind of fed to us as this is a one-time thing and, and we need to get these projects done and then things will go down. And I do see it going down to the 141, but it'll be interesting to see where we go from here. Because, you know, we're creeping towards the half a billion. And so we're, we're making, making me a little nervous and I think the other board members.
Well, we do have a pretty sizable physical plant that we need to maintain and operate. And so we can, we can take a look at, you know, we've, we've done what optimization we can do to keep costs down. I think we've been very efficient in how we look at the services. It's just the nature of the beast, and I don't mean to be flippant. But we have a large responsibility from a physical plant standpoint. There are deficiencies out there that are being deferred because we understand the board's desire to keep rates low and we're doing what we can to keep the systems operating. But there are some that will need attention.
I understand, I just, we can't go every five years 25% more. We went from 400 million, we're going to 500 million. We can't go from 500 million, we can't make those huge jumps. I get it, things are going to go up, we just, I'm just reminding everybody, I, I get it, I know. I agree, no, I appreciate.
And here comes one of our participants from the audience.
I just, I have to, to just make the remark, just for the record, that one of the reasons why we had the higher budgets for the last few years is because we had three very large projects. We had the two stormwater projects, 110 million, 60 million. And then we had the Oasis and the Recharge Project, which was 50 million. So when we do the stormwater projects, they are large like that. They're, they're going to be over 60 million, they're going to be close to 100 million. But that's why they don't happen every year. It's because it takes a while to build up those reserves to do those projects. But I just want to make that clear, is that, you know, those were legacy projects that we just, that we're just completing this year.
So it sounds like you two agree. We do.
But just for the record, you know, I wanted to, to be known that it was, you know, really those three main projects. And then to Jim's point, though, we do have ongoing facilities that, you know, are going to be coming to you. Especially, I, I really appreciate the, the sanitation rate increase because there are a lot of facilities at Warp 10, Warp 7 that need attention. So, thank you.
Okay, good, good comments. All right, so I am looking for a motion to approve 8A, which includes all three resolutions.
I'll make the motion to approve item 8A.
I'll second it. Just want to give Director Aguilar a chance to speak and before we, before we vote, just in case there's something else.
Oh, thank you, John, I'm good.
Okay. All right, roll call vote.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passed 4-0.
Thanks, Rick, good job.
Your, your first year has been good.
Speaking of precedents again.
That's, that's definitely a precedent, or I should say, first time. 8B, this is approved implementation of the replenishment facilities containment program with the US Bureau. Okay.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. I know the board's pretty familiar with this topic, so I could either just take questions or go through the brief presentation, I mean, whatever your pleasure is.
I don't, I don't need it, we've been going over and over. You know, Robert, I mean, I was going to call you or send something, but I just want to get a sense of how, how you view the, what's in the media now that the new voluntary conservation is going to be compensated at a number higher than $400 per acre foot. I thought I saw something. You know, when you take the billion and three and you divide it out and all that, and maybe you never get to a number above 400, but, but I've seen it published a number of times. And here we are doing our deal at 400. I don't want to look foolish, you know, six months from now when everyone else gets something, something more.
Right, no, I, I understand that. And I could tell you the, even, you know, at the fixed $400 acre foot, it took a while to get here. And I really appreciate the board's patience as we, you know, staff have been working pretty diligently with Reclamation and our other California partners on this. I, I think IEDs and then perhaps Yuma are the only two parties that I, I'm aware of that are going for more than $400 an acre foot. And I have no idea how, you know, those discussions are going right now. I could tell you that ours is the most straightforward. And you can, I mean, you know what date today is. It's been eight months since they published this. So I don't know, again, you know, how well those other discussions are going. So I think the media, you know, certainly like to sensationalize some of these issues. But again, I think, you know, the good thing about this district is I think we were actually trying to do something tangible by putting water on table.
Now, this is a, for a set period of three calendar years, right?
Yes, sir, it is.
So at the end of '25, December 31st, '25?
Right.
We're going to start putting water, we could start putting water back in, in Levy.
Well, maybe.
I mean, we're going to put some along the way, right?
Right.
Because 35 is, is less than our total for the year.
That's right. We, so I think on average, we can put in a little bit over 2,000 acre feet a year if we wanted to. And I would recommend that we definitely do, do that, up to the limit. I would just say that the only other addition to this is when we were reading, you know, the application back in November, I, you know, I think it was our interpretation that it went through to the end of 2025. And now I think there's some talks about this program being extended out to 2026.
Right.
So the authorization that we have, again, is, you know, for three years, which was an original application that we put in, so.
And others aren't going to start when we started anyways, right? So for that, maybe it makes sense to go longer, but.
No, we, we are definitely one of the first ones off the block. To my knowledge, I think back in March, you know, when we had the 120th anniversary celebration, Reclamation, you know, said that, I think there was like one or two other Indian, or sorry, Native American agreements that were put out there. And I, I'm pretty sure those are done, but I think the rest of the agreements have not launched. So I think we're actually one of the first.
Right. I mean, we, we can't leave the, the dollar amount open?
No, it's actually. No, it's actually in, in the contract.
I think one of the other things, I mean, again, we're not involved in the negotiations between IED and Reclamation or Metin Reclamation or even Yuma and Reclamation.
Right.
But my understanding is that those agencies are looking for additional dollars to offset economic events within the surrounding communities. I know IED has, has been very vocal in trying to cover some of those impacts and looking for, you know, increased incentive monies to offset that. I don't know how they're going to handle that. I don't know who's going to be responsible for figuring out where those extra dollars go, but I, I do understand that that is part of their negotiation strategy. Don't know how successful they're going to be.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I, I look at a couple of things, I mean, I was involved with the process as well and Imperial Irrigation District did not want to go for the straight $400 an acre foot because they felt like they had other third-party impacts. They had county obligations that they wanted to help meet. And so they were going to have to go through a process where the Bureau would go through their written request with a fine-tooth comb and put some economic consultants and economists onto the application and negotiate through that, which would take a longer time. We felt like that there was a immediate need that was communicated by the Commissioner to, you know, stop the, or curtail the replenishment and wanted to help California along in saying, hey, we're, we're doing it, we, we're, we've done it, we're going to work out the details, you guys need to jump on board too. And so I think in many ways, CVWD has been a leader in that. And, you know, the, the, you know, the compensation well, sure, you can do the 1.2 billion divided by the amount of water and I think it is 500 and something. But I, I believe that a couple of the other districts will be looking for those third-party impacts. When you look at the Palo Verde Irrigation District, it's very similar to us in terms of compensation level because that's working through the Metropolitan PBID Following Program. And that was actually at a much, they were receiving much less compensation for that and this kind of brings them up to that level, the equal to CVWD, so we're on par with the Palo Verde area as well. So there's some moving parts to it, for sure.
And we'll, and we'll have impacts. And one of the things that the board has asked that we do is to brief them on the condition of the East Area Benefit on a periodic basis. And so we will be hoping to do that either at our next meeting or the first meeting in July and then again probably in September and then potentially again in November. So we get a good sense of, of what the conditions are out there. It's kind of a good test, too, to see how sensitive the basin is. But we're also bringing on the Oasis Irrigation Expansion, so there should be less pumping going on. And then we'll get, I think we figure 30 to 35% return flows. It'll take time for all of those users to come online, but I think this three-year test period is, is a good time for us to evaluate how we might better manage the basin going forward. We have put in about 500,000 acre feet since we started in 2009. We actually had a pilot out there starting in, I think it was in the mid, late 1990s, '96, I think. So it's, it's been, I think it's been highly successful and so we'll no doubt continue. We'll just have to figure out what the sweet spot is.
So I have, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So is the, the first payment says 12 million?
Right.
And then the second payment is two, that makes up the 14?
That's for one year, right.
For one year. Well, why are we getting paid the, the 2 million in, in May of 2024 when, when, when we've already, when the water is already done, right? Because this is a calendar year.
Program, right. So the, the May deadline is important because that's when Reclamation does their decree accounting, which is the final document that actually documents the water use for the previous year. And it does take a bit of time, you know, for that process to kind of go through. So I think, you know, Reclamation basically says, it's not just them having to agree to it, but I think all the other river parties have had to agree. So that was sort of like the proof that they needed to release their final payment.
And then, and then we'll get paid again every year at the same timeframe?
The cycle starts over again for 2024. You know, so it'd be 60 days after.
So, so in 2024, we're going to get, we're going to be paid?
12 and 2, right.
12 and 2 again?
Yes, sir.
So they're always going to be four months behind on the final payment?
Right, but they front load, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the payment. We made, made sure of that.
Yeah.
Which four months is on water accounting on the Colorado. So we shake our heads, but trust me, it's, four months is not bad. Seriously.
Right.
With my involvement in, on other rivers and other basins, four months, four months is not bad. Be thankful.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve 8B and, and I'm guessing the Bureau hasn't signed this yet?
No, they're looking for our, for approval first.
And is there, is there, is one more thing? Can you get out of it?
I'm sorry?
In two years, can we change our mind?
Right, so this is, we're going to be evaluating on a year-by-year basis. I think the general manager made, you know, comment about examining, you know.
So we're not locked into 42,000 acre feet?
Well, I think that's the goal, but, you know, I think Reclamation also understands that, you know, things change.
105.
105.
105 total, yeah.
And, and we also, as we've discussed, built in some flexibility to this as well.
That's right.
Yeah.
So I think this is going to be a work in progress, but, you know, I think Reclamation's comfortable with, you know, I think the assurances that we've given them, realizing this is a goal.
I'd move approval of item 8E.
Good. I'll second that motion here. Director Aguilar, how are you doing over there?
I'm good, John, thanks for asking.
Apparently so am I.
It's three hours ahead, he's probably having the.
Two, two hours, right? Missouri?
Two hours, three.
Two hours.
Yeah, two hours.
All right, so I, I guess we're ready to vote then. A roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed 4-0.
Thank you.
8C.
Robert?
Yeah, thanks a lot. Thanks for your hard work on that. I know you're just in the middle of it right now. A word of construction contract, just Sukka, as the lowest bidder for our Mid Canal Storage Project. David Wilson, good morning.
Good morning. So as, so as the board item states, the purpose of this item is to authorize the general manager to execute a construction contract with Sukka Construction as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of $13,858,201 and simultaneously perform a deductive change order in the amount of $3861,760 to bring the construction contract to $9996,441. The total cost of this request, which includes engineered record, construction support, inspection services and geotechnical engineering services during construction, as well as a 5% contingency, is $10881,441. The project is included in the recently approved capital improvement budget for FY24 in the amount of $6925,000. Does require, which is included in the package here, a budget amendment in the amount of $3956,441 to cover the, the variance. The project itself advertised for bids to construct on April 20th of this year. On May 4th of this year, we have a mandatory pre-bid meeting with the intention to inform the contractors about the nuances of the project and to allow them to develop an informed bid. On May 18th, 2023, I'm sorry, let me back up. In the pre-bid meeting, we had five contractors and one supplier show up for the, for the project. We also did a field site visit. On May 18th, we only had one bidder bid the project in the amount that you see here. Review of the bid items indicated that there were a couple of temporary items that had an inordinate cost associated with them. The, the main temporary item was a diversion structure. The project requires that we perform work in the Old Canal first before we touch the existing canal. And then at some point, once we get to a certain level, we need to divert the flows from the existing canal into the Old Canal footprint so that we can work within the existing footprint of the, of the existing canal. The proposal was to install sheet piling to facilitate this, this diversion. We also, in our pre-bid with the contractors, were looking for other, other options, other ideas for how we could divert the flows. As we investigated these bid items, we realized that there was a perception of risk that the contractor was, was incorporated into his, his fee. And we decided that there might be an opportunity to remove this, this need to put in the sheet piling for this diversion. They had no other, no other proposal for the diversion. And so we removed that component from this, from this cost, which is what the deduct is here, in addition to a couple of aesthetic items, which in no way play into the benefit of the project itself. The other item that's being removed is gravel that we had intended to put on the slope. That was intended to, to capture or to reinforce the slope for wind erosion, just to help with maintenance, which is a component we decided that, given the three-to-one nature of the slope, the flat nature of the slope that we're incorporating into the project, that maybe this is something we can see if is necessary down the road. So that's part of the deduct for the project. We do have San Diego County Water Authority and Sandler Ray, Indian Water Authority contributing to the cost of the project. We have the Bureau or the bipartisan infrastructure law loan in the amount of $7.5 million for the project that we intend to support overall. The contribution for this work now would be CVWD contributing 2.0, I'm sorry, $5.3 million to the project. 2.9 of it would go from the loan, would come from the loan funding and then the rest would be pay-go. And with that, I'll just field any questions.
Thank you.
I did want to say, I'm sorry, I did want to say, Director Aguilar, you've requested that we put DBE information in these, in these board packages and I apologize, I left that out, but the contractor did provide, is not a DBE, however, one of their subs is, and I can provide that to the board upon request.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, David.
David, I, I was a little confused on the resolution of the diversion into the Old Canal. Did you guys solve that without the sheet piling?
We did.
Yeah, okay. Good. That's, I, I was just a little confused on that, so, thanks.
Yeah, the, the details associated with that were near the, were near the, the siphons. And so we were incorporating sheet piling to make, to provide for a little more agility with the contractor. And I think in hindsight, it might have just been too conservative. We think we found a much more feasible, simpler method for diverting the flows.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to suggest that on the Russian River up in, up in, I think it's Sonoma County, they actually put a inflatable dam in, for groundwater recharge, so they back up the river, which I'm like shocked that they can do that up there. But I was thinking, yeah, I could just inflate a dam in a siphon and move the water out. So you figured it out.
Yeah.
That's good.
You need a lot of space for that, though, don't you?
I know, yeah.
All right. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this item? I'll move approval. This is something I've been wanting.
I'll second.
Good. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
Thank you. And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
That passed 4-0.
Thank you.
And then D is approved solicitation of bids for the construction of the East Side Dyke realignment project.
Yes, that is me again. So this item is, as it states, for the Board of Directors to approve the solicitation of bids for the construction of the East Side Dyke realignment project between Waste Way Number Three and Dillon Road. The East Side Dyke was constructed by the Bureau of Reclamation as part of the protective works for the Coachella branch of the All-American. It was completed in 1949. This particular location was constructed where the toe is right near the property line. And we're in a situation where we've got development, developing as per their right, right next to the property line. And the 70-plus years since it's been constructed have caused wind erosion and, and sand pileup on the downwind side of the dyke, making it difficult for maintenance. And so the proposal here is to relocate the dyke in a manner that will increase our ability to access and maintain it. That's, it's the Bureau's dyke, we maintain it.
We, we maintain it, so it's owned by the Bureau?
Yes, and the Bureau has been involved in the relocation.
What's the green and black dotted line?
That's meant to delineate the dyke.
But it's, okay, so that's kind of the westerly toe where it should be?
Uh, no, that is where the existing top of the, of the dyke is.
Oh, okay, okay. And so we're going to move it to the east?
We're going to move it, this north is up, we're going to move it, we're going to angle it slightly north.
Right. Okay. What's the estimated cost?
2.8.
That would be paid out of stormwater?
Out of the stormwater fund, yes.
Okay.
Paul, yes, yes.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
If we're going out for bids, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion. So move.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? A roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Thank you. On to E. This is a purchase of liability insurance for the coming fiscal year. Morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board. So this board action item is to authorize the general manager to secure the property and liability insurance coverage through the district's insurance broker, Willis Towers Watson, for the fiscal year 2324 in an amount up to $2224,112. That includes a 5% contingency and it is also recommended to provide authority to select alternative carriers should any of the insurers amend or withdraw their quotes. Questions?
Remind us what the percent changes from the, from the current year?
I think it was... It was actually a reduction of 11%, almost 12%.
Do we have, I, I... Do we have, I, I haven't opened my thing and I don't remember. What, how did we resolve our auto liability?
We're still self-insured.
We remain self-insured, yeah.
Okay. How's that working out?
Well, underwriters still look at, you know, five years of history, lost history. So we're still have some open claims that they're looking at.
So from an insurance standpoint, Blanca's correct, but we have taken pretty stringent actions in-house. We've got the, we've got a system that basically now will monitor driver operations and behavior. And there's education instruction that takes place. We've got an accident review panel that has been set up for anything that comes across in an incident report. So I think, you know, given time, we will have a much better performance record. There will probably still be increased costs because we're now coming in as a new insured, you know, even if the history is gone. But we'll see. I mean, for now, there's not really much of an option. So we're self-insured.
We've been doing good as far as, you know, accidents, so that's a good thing.
I guess that's what was my question, yeah. The lo, the losses are looking better.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
So here, I have a question on that. Do, do insurance companies look at losses from the, from the date of the incident or from the ongoing losses when they're paid out?
Both.
Both?
Right, so they're looking at when it occurred and then the severity and how much they've paid out. So that's still, if it's still ongoing and they're still anticipating they're gonna pay out more, then that's something that's on the books, too.
Okay. Fair enough. I'd move approval. 11%?
Second. Okay, so we have a motion. Go ahead, Director Aguilar.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. If we select a carrier, a new carrier, and we have litigation or settlement negotiations with an existing carrier who is not selected going forward, how does that work? Does the new carrier pick up that obligation or do we just see it through with the other carrier?
No, we would continue with the existing. So a new carrier would not pick up, you know, start paying on a, a loss that's already in motion?
Yeah, and as I understand it, John, even if we were to go to a new carrier and didn't have any open claims against the exist, against the previous insurer, if something were to come up during that time period when we had the previous carrier, there is still the obligation of that previous carrier to cover that claim or loss and not pass it on to the new carrier, if, if that helps at all, or it probably just makes it even more confusing.
No, Jim, no, that helps a lot, thank you, I appreciate that.
It depends on how the policy is written. So if, if the policy is a claims-made policy, it's going to be whoever is your insurer when the claim, claim is made, even if it's for something that happened during a different time period. I mean, I don't know how our policies are written, but...
We have both. We have some claims made and some that are depending on the data loss.
I mean, I think usually employment practices policies are claims-made policies, yeah. Property is probably the other.
Right.
Usually you know you have a claim, though.
That's right.
On those sorts of things when they happen. All right, I think we're looking for a second. I think I already gave you one second. Did you give me a second? All right, so we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, that item passed four zero. Thanks, Blanca.
Thank you.
Written communications, we had another letter from Mr. Arias. And that's in the packet. 9B. We have a presentation on the reserve policy, particularly regarding the state water project fund target. Rick?
Yeah, so I'll be brief on this one. This is a follow-up item from last month's discussion on the overall reserve targets. The board at that time looked at the, the comprehensive update and decided to just focus on the state water project reserve. But we didn't have the language and the policy for your review yet. We were looking for direction on the overall changes. So in this item, you actually see the revised language in the policy doing the very things that we talked about last month, which effectively takes a static $20 million reserve target and it, it changes it to be updated based on the ongoing nature of the fund. You have different pieces, things like 50% of the operating budget being the, the working capital reserve, and then the other major piece to it being making sure we set aside the remainder of whatever we don't budget for up to the 100% allocation, in case we get 100% allocation rather than what we usually budget for, which is 50%. So this, this is really for your review and, and sort of a last chance to give any input before we bring it back for actual board action at the next meeting.
Thank you. And that was...
I don't know, it just allows us some flexibility. I mean, as we, as we saw this year, we didn't think we were ever gonna get 100% and...
But we did.
So I think that's, that's...
I would've bet you money we would never get 100%.
Yeah.
Ever again, and then here we are.
So are you placing a bet now or?
No, I would've lost the bet.
How long is forever, right?
We bet Peter on stuff like that, and, and I don't think he would've taken that bet.
I would not have taken that, no way. I would, in fact, even this year, I mean, the highest bet I made was 85%.
Yeah, which is a pretty high number. Okay, Rick, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, wouldn't know action there.
Thanks, sir.
Board general comments. Why don't we start with Director Aguilar?
No comments, John, thank you.
You're welcome. Director Nelson?
Yeah, so again, thanks for approving the contracts with the Bureau. I think that CBWD is a real leader in California water policies and management, so appreciate that and the support for Robert and his team. That's excellent. Hey, there's, you know, speaking of 100%, you know, San Luis reservoir is still 100% full. The state water project's delivering Article 21 water, and some people are taking minor volumes of Table A water. So I think last I looked at, Coachella had been, account had been credited in about 5,000, at the end of April, about 5,000 acre feet of Table A and 10,000 acre feet of Article 21. So that goes into the Rick's budget over there where we have that new agreement with Matt to pay for the storage program, but it's more water for us, so that's fantastic. Just on the Colorado, you know, we've had, three of the last five years have been 6 million acre feet of runoff, and this year it's 14 and a half million acre feet. So a big, big improvement, over 50 feet of elevation gain in Lake Powell and forecasted of over 20 foot of increase in Lake Mead. So I, I know we can use that pretty fast, but it sure is a shot in the arm for, for all of us. And when you look at the additional conservation that's gonna happen, I think we're setting ourselves up for, for good lake levels going forward and, you know, it always depends on the hydrology, but we're looking good for now, so.
And on top of that, the, the snow melt has been...
Slow.
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 I mean, you know, our weather here, and I've lived here my whole life, I've never seen anything like this June ever. Maybe we've seen a day or two, but we're going on, you know, three weeks. We had May and two weeks of June, and then we're gonna have another week, it's just...
Yeah, next week also.
You know, I, my uncle, he's been coming down here for 75 years, he's 90, he's saying, this is just unprecedented weather, so enjoy it, because I'm, I hope we're not gonna get paid back here in July and August, or, or have a summer until Thanksgiving, you know. Fingers crossed.
I doubt it. You know, all, all that, all those pundits out there talking about how we solved the Colorado River crisis, and the one that was really kind of stung a little was that John Oliver, the HBO comedian, English guy, that said the, the worst policy you could have is pray for rain. And it seemed like he had nailed it, but guess what? He was wrong.
Yeah.
He'll never probably admit that, but whoever was out there praying for rain, it worked. And really did make a, a big difference. I mean, you know, how do you, it's, it's something you can't control, and I think that makes it really difficult. We try with all of our cloud seeding programs and, you know, I still am not sure if those really work that well, but we do them. And here we are with this massive wet year, so we'll make the most of it. I mean, and, and it, it's very heartening, at least in the Colorado watershed, that that water gets captured. You know? If, if only we could do that in California, it, it would be even better.
Yeah, so, so with that said, I think there've been about 22 million acre feet of, of water flow out through the Delta. Not saying that all of that should have got captured and stored, but 22 million acre feet's a lot of water to go through.
No, I know, and, and you know, I...
10%.
People who I respect will say, well, you know, surface storage is really not the solution, it's groundwater storage. Well, what a perfect year to test that argument. And how much water really were we able to capture in, in groundwater storage, which is a, which is very limited by geography and it's, and it's, and it's slow, you know, and, and somewhat disruptive when you have to leave all that, all that water, you know, to percolate. But, you know, I mean, I, I think, who, who's better at groundwater storage than CBWD? I mean, we're, we're great at it, but it's a limited opportunity and surface storage is still, you know, if, if sites had existed, it would be, I think it would be full, right? I, I saw something that said it wouldn't be full, but I don't agree with that.
Yeah, so sites, the sites, Water Authority, if I'm, if I'm not wrong, and, and Robert might correct me, but I think at this point could have saved over 500,000 acre feet of water.
Yeah.
And I think Jerry Brown's number is somewhere between 500 and 600,000 acre feet of water this year. And, and, but just remember, Northern California was not as impacted with snow levels as Central and Southern California.
True.
Northern California was really good, but the Central California, the Kings River, Toolumine, Merced, then all the way down to the Kern, had the 300 to 400%, where the Northern California was only, you know, 180% or something.
But they're, they're, they're more likely in Northern California going forward in the future.
Possibly, yeah.
Oh, I, I would agree with you.
That's correct, so, so, yes, yeah, and, and the middle and southern to not, to not...
Yeah, it was so unusual this year. It's like you said, the weather's so unusual, right? Yeah.
It really is. Good. All right, I think that's it for comments. Do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Very good. Let's get into the meeting reports. Director Nelson, I think you have a few to start.
Yeah, I'm kind of catching up. I attended as well, with John Aguilar attended virtually. I attended as well on the May 4th for the draft SEIS, which has now been rescinded by the Bureau of Reclamation, so that was good. Number of public comments were directed at CBWD. We noted that before. And then on May 5th, I attended the Colorado River Forecast Center, which really kind of concentrated on some insodata, which is indicating that, you know, we're gonna have a, I'm quite concerned about this because they're saying we're gonna have an El Nino and, which means, you know, a wetter year for California. I'm concerned because last year was supposed to be the driest ever and we got record impact, so I'm concerned now they're forecasting wet, so about that. Then on May 9th through 11th was the Association Aqua meeting up in Monterey. I attended that number of meetings and so forth. In fact, on the 10th, we had the Colorado River Board meeting, which was a, held in the city hall there in Monterey. Very old and beautiful building, and we honored the service of Glenn Peterson, who has been a very longtime Colorado River Board member, former president of Aqua and a very active in the water community, so we had a chance to honor him while we were there at the, at the conference. Same day, we had a six-agency committee and kind of previewed the budget, which we'll have on our agenda to approve day after tomorrow at the Colorado River Board meeting. And so that takes me through May 10th.
Then Director Aguilar, we have you on the Salt and Sea Authority on the 25th.
Oh, yeah, thank you, John. So there was, there were a couple items, there was discussion on the Padilla bill again, and subsequently, the authority sent a, a letter to Padilla staff requesting certain changes to that bill. And frankly, I don't know where we are with that, but staff's probably all over that and they can give an update if needed. On the 29th, I met with Katie Burrows at her request. I guess Katie was formerly with SeVAG, she's now doing pro bono work with the, with this organization that's working on this Chacuala National Monument. I, I did express to her some concerns that we've expressed about it. She mentioned there have been many changes made to address those concerns and that she may be coming to the board at some point in the future, and Jim probably knows what's happening on that. And then lastly, on the 30th, Vice President Estrada and I met with Mayor Pro Tim Carnavale and Councilman Gutierrez, who discussed a number of items between the two, including the rebate program and their participation. And Jim went over the statistics that he usually does, and it was a good exchange. And that's it.
Okay, good, thank you. We traveled, Jim, Barrett, and Director Estrada and I traveled to Imperial Valley to meet with the outgoing and incoming general managers and their current vice president of the board at IID on June 1st. And good meeting. Congratulations to Henry Martinez on his retirement. That's all I'm gonna say about that. That was interesting. Let's see here, Director Bianco, you have the last two.
We had the CBCC Conservation Commission meeting. Went over the budget. We approved a contract with the University of California for some biological monitoring. We also approved a contract for technical assistance with the desert tortoise monitoring.
Okay.
And I wasn't at the uni.
Okay. Are there any other meetings that we need to report on?
For me?
No? Okay.
I'd move approval of the meetings and conferences reported on.
Second that. A roll call, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Director Bianco?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Passed four oh. General manager report.
Yes, sir, a few more items than normal, although we are suspending the reporting on COVID statistics for the time being. There is a SCADA open house that'll be taking place from noon to 1 o'clock on June 29th in the Critical Service Support Building. If you have some time to swing by, I'm sure the crew would be happy to, happy to explain and show off what it is they've been working on for the last six, seven years. I also can report that we have made an offer to and had an acceptance from a candidate for the new Environmental Services Department Director, replacing Steve Bigley. Her name is Joanne Yan Lee. She comes from Monterey One Water, which is a JPA...
She comes from Monterey One Water, which is a JPA that was established in the mid-'70s, right after the Clean Water Act, to kind of try and collect and reuse wastewater up in the Northern Monterey County. So she'll be a welcome addition here. I also provided to you, handed out a copy of the published strategic plan. We'll be tracking that and providing periodic updates to you as we move along through the calendar year. We have finished our payments to the QSA JPA. It was about $36.7 million and $2,003, and we just recently made the final payment, which does include some advance payments of almost $3.3 million. So we are done paying for the QSA mitigation, although we'll probably continue our involvement in the group until those funds are expended. I did talk a little bit earlier about the monitoring and reporting back to the board on where we are with East Valley groundwater levels. And then finally, just a reminder that next Tuesday, from 1:30 to 3, we have a class and comp study session. HR will be reporting on their efforts to eliminate some of the classifications that we've had and at least give you an update on how that whole process is proceeding. And that's all I've got, sir.
Good. Thank you. Council comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to follow up on the site project. Part of the site reservoir project requires a new permit from the State Water Resources Control Board to divert the water into the reservoir. The Sites Authority had their application submitted to the State Board in May of 2022. The State Board just recently, in June of 2023, deemed the application to be complete, not approved, just complete. This now starts a 60-day period where the public and interested parties can protest the issuance of a water permit. After that 60-day period is done, then the State Board will start the process to analyze whether and how to issue the water permit. That might take another year as well. So the water permit application process is underway, but we have not reached the endpoint yet, but we'll keep you abreast of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any departmental reports? No.
I don't see anybody jumping up, sir, now.
I don't either. So at this time, the board will recess to close session to consider the items on the agenda. We will reconvene following our closed session to report out.